Order?
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Mayor LaChapelle.
Present?
Present. I was like, hi. It's been a day. My apologies.
Yeah, sure Marilyn.
You don't actually roll call, right? Because we're not virtual.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Anything at all? No? All right, we're just called to order. We're gonna skip our roll call. That's free. Okay, um, we do have a few announcements. We're gonna start with a brief one. We want to make the public aware that we have scheduled a work session which will technically be an open public meeting in the rear conference room on the second floor Tuesday, January 30th at 6:00 PM. And the topic for that work session will be the new superintendent search. We'll be getting to talk about that with the full committee in that work session on the 30th, and the public is welcome to attend. As of tonight, we do not have hybrid capabilities for that room, but we're gonna make an effort to make that possible for meetings in that room in the future. So it's available for in-person attendance on Tuesday, January 30th. So we'll move on to correspondence. Megan?
Um, let me confirm that there was nothing from today. I have no correspondence to report.
We do have the EEA letter.
We do. So would you like me to read it in?
That'd be great, actually.
Okay. Do you mind if I borrow yours to read it?
Sure.
So we did receive some correspondence from the East Hampton Education Association, and this letter reads, "Dear Superintendent Beninda, the East Hampton Education Association would like to notify you of our intent to bargain successor agreements on behalf of the members of our association. Please utilize the email," and then Sean Jean gives his email address, "to notify me of dates on which the East Hampton Public Schools negotiating team will be prepared to begin bargaining. Sincerely, Sean Jean," who is the president of the East Hampton Education Association."
Thank you. So after receiving that letter, I did appoint a three-person negotiation subcommittee which is going to mirror our finance subcommittee. Those are the members that tend to be most familiar with budgeting and finances for the school department. So that's myself, Laura Scott, Megan Harvey, who's the new chair of the finance subcommittee, and our newer member Eric Gallette. And we did set the first handful of meeting dates, I believe February 7th, February 27th, March 4th, and March 13th. So we'll be getting those negotiations shortly. And then there was another note about the school committee meeting schedule and the member list. So the calendar is out, and the, there should be, all of our updated contact information should be available on the school website, including the new members' contact emails. They're not required to provide a personal phone number. Some people do have a phone number on there you can reach them at. So comments and concerns, you can go to the website and find our contact information. Gifts?
I have no gifts to report.
And we have our inaugural presentation from our Mountain View student representative, Piper Baralt. Piper, do you want to take the podium?
Hi, my name's Piper, and I'm here, I'm in eighth grade, and I'm here to talk to you about things that have been going on. So first of all, in all our classes, in science, we're learning about biology, and then in math, we're learning about functions. Civics, we're learning about the Declaration of Independence. And ELA, we're learning how to write argumentative essays. And then in art, we are drawing one-point perspectives. Music, we're learning about Latin American music. In gym, we're doing like wiffle ball and baseball. And in STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math, we were making robots. And in health, we're learning about safety. And then upcoming on, upcoming on February 2nd, we have a Valentine's dance, and it is hosted from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the elementary school cafeteria. And we shall dress in school-appropriate clothes, and pizza, drinks, and snacks will be provided for all of us. And then on December 2nd, we hosted a hot chocolate and candy cane fundraiser for a dollar each to make money to host these events, like dances and stuff, and other like events. And then starting January 22nd, which was yesterday, we, or the middle school started the Great Kindness Challenge, which includes the year's theme of creating kindness all around us. And we were writing kind things on hearts that are gonna be displayed around the school so kids can see kind things. And then on November 11th, our school had John Berman from Love 'Em Kinder give us a performance, and he was really enjoyable. And he was talking about writing some songs. He asked some students to raise their hand and come down to share like a story about the topic he wrote the song about. Thank you.
Thank you, Piper. Nice work.
This is awesome. I wish that we will figure out the sharing of, how to share these because there's some great slides with visuals of all the stuff that Piper was talking about. I'm pretty excited myself for the Valentine's Day dance. I am sure that I will hear about this later, but I have volunteered to show them.
I know.
Me too.
I'm a sixth grader.
I'll see you there.
Pretty excited.
Thank you, Piper. That was great.
This is really, this is so, I love this kindness month and the hearts and all of that. It sounds amazing.
Lovely job. We don't have Mackenzie McCarthy from the high school with us tonight, so we are-
I'm actually on Zoom.
She's with us remotely.
Are you ready, Mackenzie?
What?
Are you ready?
Yes, I am ready.
Take her away.
So the high school is working on forming a school community pantry which will be accessible to any and all students, and both the high school and middle schools have ran food drives to benefit the pantry. Students, Student Council is currently working to connect with Special Olympics, and we are working on this as a connection to MAS-C, which is the Massachusetts Association of Student Council. And Student Council is also working on finalizing the Council of Excellence binder to MAS-C, which recognizes councils for their hard work and dedication throughout the school year. We have identified areas of growth and improvement. Areas of improvement include community service and student voice, and effectively meeting students' needs. And that's all, so thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment. Anyone from the audience have anything to share? Or anybody joining us remotely?
I see one at home. Do you have anything else you want to say?
Yeah, we would love to set about a three-minute maximum in case we have multiple people. We have a lot of work to get through after our last meeting was postponed, so we'd love to hear what your concerns are.
All right. Savannah, you, are you able to unmute Savannah?
That's how?
Yes, I am. Um, so, it's my turn to speak?
Yep.
Okay, so first, do you mind letting, who is John Berman that did a kindness performance? I just had a quick, I just was curious about that.
We can't respond to you during public speak, but we could definitely try to get you some information after the meeting.
Yes, please, if you could let me know who John Berman is and what he performed. And what I wanted to talk about was the out-of-district referral. So I saw that in 2024, East Hampton Public Schools has a $530,000, $530,000 sped grant in addition to a $565,374 circuit break-in grant. And it looks like they only are approving $39,000, $39,756 for out-of-district referrals. And my daughter has been denied an out-of-district referral several times in the school district, and she would highly benefit from one. Her IEP is not sufficient, it's not meeting her needs, she is not making progress. So I'm just wondering why the budget is this high, yet, yet my daughter, there's no room in that budget to get a out-of-district referral? I'd just like to know where all this money's going since the school's getting all these grants. She has also been disqualified from attending the before-and-after-school program, which put a huge, huge debt in my family's personal lives financially, emotionally. And I just want to know what's going to be done. I have been working with Antigone Lively, and she has been amazing, she has been a great help. However, the school itself is not meeting my daughter's needs as she's highly autistic, and she is only falling more behind. So I just think that this is something that needs to be looked at as a district because the money is definitely there, and I don't feel like it's all being allocated appropriately. And I also had a question about the, some of the curriculum that was being sent. I believe it was called, it was something about equity, inclusion, and they were gonna be, you know, studying up on some stuff like that in the curriculum. And I never received a copy of that curriculum, and I believe I did request it. So I would just like to know what my daughter's learning in school. I'd like to know who John Berman is because I don't think any parents were made aware of this performance. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Savannah. Do we have any other comments for public speak? Let me give it just one minute. Okay, looks like we are all set. We're gonna close public comment for this meeting, move on to the superintendent update.
So we have a couple of updates. One is that we do want to let everybody know the kindergarten information night is Thursday, February 1st, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at Mountain View School. It will, there'll be a welcome to Mountain View Information Center, information session, and tour of the kindergarten classrooms. You'll be able to meet school administrators, kindergarten teachers, and district staff. You'll be able to connect with other kindergarten families, learn about registration events. You'll hear from parents and students about their experience in the East Hampton schools. You can ask questions about curriculum, about transportation, daily schedule, and also about the great facilities there. So bring your future kindergarten, see their new school. You'll also receive a free Mountain View button. And if you want more information on it, go onto our webpage, and you'll be able to locate that. Tonight is the L Night, L Family Night, to celebrate the New Year. So it is going on right now. We just wanted to let families know that we do have events like this, and we would like you to become involved in it. We'll give a presentation at the next school committee on how it went with some pictures and some testimony. We have tonight, too, I'm not sure if we can actually show the school improvement plans on the screen.
I'm not sure if we're able to share anything. So unless we have a separate computer for over there.
Okay. Let me see, yeah. So let me see what.
I wish that I was able to do it, but I just can't.
Can't get the slides up. Was there a way we did it last time?
Well, we shared it directly into the, it's not letting you do that.
I'm not allowed to on my computer. There's something about the Mac Google Meet connection that doesn't like, I just like, I don't have that.
Are you in the meeting?
Like, you can't share your meeting.
I'm not in the meeting, let's see.
Your screen.
If you can join the meeting, you should be able to share.
Yes, that's how we did it.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can join the meeting, let's see.
Only other people who are not me can share. I've been blocked.
Okay, so if I go to-
You're out of control, Megan.
I know. Not the person I've heard of.
Should I go to the school email to get onto the meeting, share it?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look in the agenda, there should be a Google.
That's what I can't get back into.
Oh, okay. I just sent it to you.
Okay. So it should be, just give us a few moments of technical issues.
One minute, and what we're gonna be sharing are the school improvement plans, one from Mountain View School and one for East Hampton High School. But we just want to be able to put these informational slides up so the public can follow along to the discussion and the presentation.
I don't know why you wouldn't be getting that.
Yeah, Sam, we're not getting emails either. One second.
We'll get there. We'll get there. I think it should probably be any computer that's not mine, either here or up there. Because we, other presenters are fine to be up there. It's just-
That's really weird.
Yeah, because her email disappeared too, Sue's.
It's very strange. Um, hold, oh, you know what we'll do.
You can also go to the East Hampton City page.
That's what I was gonna do, the East Hampton City page. I'm so sorry that I just took your computer. I just have trouble explaining this stuff.
Oh, no, just take it. Happy. You took it. So I, while we're doing that, let me just give an explanation. So every year, you have to give a school improvement plan, which is based on the data that you review for your school. You have your school council that is made up of parents and teachers and school administrators and some district people. You review all the data that you have, and you write goals for your school for this coming year. So tonight, we're gonna present the plans for East Hampton High School as well as Mountain View School. Mountain View School is one plan, but addresses middle as well as the elementary school goals.
It'll let me click on the link. There we go. That should work. Right now, I'm gonna turn off your sound.
Got it?
All right, this should do it.
Someone has to let me in. Okay, now where is the?
All right, go to shot.
You go down to this, this one with the arrow, I think that's share.
We got it.
Let me try again. Sorry.
It's difficult to share screens with the pre-Google Meet. I'm assuming there's a USB-
We used to plug in right up there.
And I think that would still work. There's no reason that doesn't work. So there's a presenter up there, it will work fine.
We can, I mean, we can try it. It didn't work the last time we tried it.
Yeah. They're right.
But that doesn't mean it won't work this time. I mean, last time, this worked.
This is not related to Google Meet. This is-
Yeah, it's not letting me share anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's related to Google Meet at the city level.
All right, let's try to plug it in.
All right.
Yeah, so they're not gonna let anybody, the city domain, this is a city link, and they won't let anybody share or present or be an administrator of the meeting without an easthamptonma.gov email.
Well, it's the-
No. Yeah, so I don't know-
So we send it to your email?
Yeah, so-
Yeah, will you be able to get them?
We'll have Teams or Google, I know, I-
I guess if you open it up, I can just go through it and explain it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, so if you, would you be able to log in with, with the city.gov? Because-
Maybe, we just heightened it up because of cyber attacks.
Oh, right.
Yeah. So we got, we got hit pretty hard.
Yeah.
Oh, that might be why we can't share.
We stopped, we didn't lose data, but we did change our security settings.
Any chance that we could eventually add the school email into that?
It's a different firewall.
Oh, okay.
But I guess we have to do presentations from the podium.
Yep, we're gonna have to skip-
The school does hybrid meetings all the time.
Let me, um, let me see if I can get this set up.
Okay.
Probably Meet.
Any?
360 Office. Yeah.
Okay. Right? So we do have both principals here today, so if they're, once we get it up, we can, they can, if there's any questions from the school committee at the end, we can also go through that. Oh, that one's not something to happen.
Even if it just connects to this one, you can just minimize Google Meet, it won't change anything about the actual meeting running through-
Okay.
East Hampton Media. That's the part that didn't work before.
So what are you asking me to do here? Because I don't want to screw anything up.
Nothing you can be screwed up. I'm assuming that this connection right here should just minimize.
And I think that, I thought that this one went over, I thought this one went over there. When we used to do it-
That one used to go over here, your past.
We can just read, I can just read it.
I think we should read it, put it on the website.
Just read it.
Maybe we can do something.
Possibly, if you know anything about it, please, Alfred.
Okay. We're gonna call this for tonight and just move ahead with a verbal presentation from each of the principals. We don't want to waste everybody's time, and we will remind everyone that the full, we are gonna make these school improvement plans available to the public through the website as well.
Great. So I'll just, need to get my computer back.
Yeah, Sam will bring it back.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming. I just thought, I found a remote, I pressed a button, I thought maybe that would work, and it didn't. It didn't do it.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Do we want to start with Mountain View School?
Sure. Let me just go over to the, open it up.
Okay, oh, even better.
Okay. So where is it?
Should we just read it out loud and let them?
We're gonna let Superintendent Beninda present the-
Sorry, was it in your email?
Where am I now?
Oh, you're in the, if you click the back button. Maybe again.
It disappeared. Do you want me to read yours over there?
Sure.
It's mine disappeared. I don't know where it is. Mountain View, I haven't East Hampton. Okay, that's a, oh, it's ugly. They have a good old try. Okay, so basically, the, there's a form that was developed by the district, and the principals and their teams each filed the form to address the needs of their own school. So Mountain View Improvement Plan starts basically with their vision, vision of future where East Hampton Public Schools are the heartbeat of our community, where all are accepted and able to authentically participate in academic, emotional, and social learning within a setting that is welcoming, inclusive, and adaptive to the needs of all students. And their mission is to facilitate the academic, social, and emotional development of all students so they can lead full lives, exercise, inform choice, and contribute to the community. And then they have their guiding principles, demonstrate kindness, respect, support to each other, and working to create a community that is nurturing, inclusive, and equitable, engaging as learners who persevere through challenges, and fostering awareness of our place within a broader global community, and recognition of our independence. So the benchmarks, this is what's really important to hear, is the MVS, MELT members, those are the group that are working together to look at MCAS results and come up with how we're gonna address needed improvement. So the first one is MVS MELT teachers review spring 23 MCAS results with teachers in grades two through eight. The results will be analyzed, and student-specific interventions will be identified and implemented. So obviously, the evidence is the MCAS results, and then here's the goals. Throughout the 23-24 school year, data will be collected and analyzed using curricular and norm reference assessments, in-progress monitoring tools to examine student growth. Students will improve their scores on assessments, referrals for special and interventional decrease as tier-two supports are introduced. School administration will implement effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. Staff will use feedback from their evaluator for the purpose of improving daily instruction, summon of evals, administration literacy, coach, and staff. And throughout this year, staff at the elementary level will be provided ongoing professional development in the areas of planned literacy instruction. The benchmarks were by November 15th, the crisis team will be identified, and meet to review and update the building crisis respond documents, share with staff. They'll meet periodically throughout the year to review district, school safety plans, and documents. And the evidence would be obviously the crisis documents, the staff meeting agendas, the crisis team agendas, and administration. Okay, B, during the 23-24 school year, with support of the SEL Mental Health Grant, MVS will screen, identify, and provide necessary interventions to students at risk. And all staff will effectively use data to place students in the proper intervention and monitor student progress and results. On the DESA SEL, that's a screener that we use to assess students and how they're doing in the social-emotional area, also using student surveys. Students reported increase in their feelings of positive self-identity in classroom belonging by the end of the year compared to the beginning of the year. So for this benchmark, we give the test throughout the year, and you compare how students thought at the beginning of the year about themselves, and then you're hoping for an improvement at the end of the year because of your interventions. So they've already done the beginning of the year benchmarks. We also implemented, again, the Second Step Online Program in all general education, special education, homeroom courses. There were kits separate for pre-K. Communication goals of the curriculum to parents and caregivers, use common, student-friendly SEL language in all classrooms, and supplemental learning experiences, monitor grade level alignment and pacing of curriculum, and collect end-of-year assessment on DESA and the student surveys. So the benchmarks on that will be the beginning of the year and end-of-year screener. BOY is beginning of year, and ELY is end of year. And survey data, this will be done through classroom walkthroughs, observations from morning meetings, and other SEL curriculum instructional blocks. Also, handouts, resources, parent-teacher conferences, common vocabulary documents, shared between general ed, special ed, student support and counseling staff, and grade level, and specialty agendas and notes to demonstrate alignment and pacing. And also the involvement of the school adjustment counselor. So C will be throughout this year, MVS will partner with River Valley EPD to make available mental health counseling services for the students. There'll be scheduling of counseling services, DESA screening data, and work with the River Valley Counseling. So benchmarks for family and community engagement, the overarching goal is that Mountain View School promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnership with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders. And the objective is to monitor and support culturally responsive and collaborative practices that engage all families to actively participate in school community. So again, our benchmark, they're gonna collaborate with MELT. MELT means Middle and Elementary Leadership Team. They're gonna, they have actually developed already through the school council, a family engagement survey that they'll be sending out that will show benchmarks for family engagement. The evidence will be the agendas from the MELT meetings, and also the surveys and the results. They'll continue to refine the newsletter correspondence to include less information. While I attended both of the meetings at Mountain View, the families had spoke that the newsletter was very long that they received, and they wanted a shorter, very specific newsletter, which they have now been using, and there was a lot of positive information from families on they really liked getting right through the newsletter. They want to collaborate with the Middle and Elementary Leadership Team to provide consistency with the content and frequency that will be shared with families across grade levels in the department. And they want to develop a directory of staff members for the district website, which includes their name, roles, and their photos. So the next goal is on professional culture. And the goal is that Mountain View will promote success for all students by nurturing a school culture of mutual support, reflective practice, high expectations, and continuation of learning for staff. They want to strengthen school culture, climate by intentionally implanting routines and structure in culturally responsive instructional practices and curricula, multi-tiered support, multi-tiered systems of support, and opportunities for staff's professional collaboration. So establish high-functioning grade level content teams. They're gonna use research-based protocols and teaming practices that will improve their collaboration and professional learning among leadership teachers, and enable teachers to improve classroom instruction. They'll establish a climate and culture that provides a safe, orderly, and respectful environment for students in a collegial, collaborative, and professional culture among teachers. So I got a little tickled. They continuously evaluate student progress, tier interventions, and the social well-being of all staff and students. So they're gonna have PLCs, Professional Learning Community and Teams. They'll meet monthly, discuss calming readings. Among, where did I leave out? Multi-tiered Systems of Support and Universal Design for Learning. So multi-tiered system support is something we're still working on, developing a plan for our schools to be able to- for our schools to be able to adequately address tier-one interventions, tier-two interventions, and then above tier-two. Universal Design for Learning Framework, we're initiating that conversation now by a book study that's happening with all district leaders, written by Katie Novick, and we'll be presenting, the report of the superintendent, is on universal design learning at our next February meeting. So, then we also attend professional learning activities with UDL and MTSS, meet with a team of the PLC to read and discuss a common text, share common effective strategies with teams, and monitor practices. So, this plan for Mountain View involves a lot of work, a lot of meetings of the school council. There was, you know, a lot of lively conversation and discussion, and this is truly a document that was made by the school council and working with administration. So, this plan was already voted by the school council.
Great.
So, that's the middle one. I don't know, you wanted to questions after each one, or?
We have to vote on each, so why don't we take them one at a time? Are you okay on time, Mr. Evans, if we get through Mountain View? Thank you so much. So, I'd open it up to the committee. Does anybody have comments or questions on the Mountain View School Improvement Plan for 23-24 school year? Mayor?
A couple. So, a general question is the MVS plan, how does it connect back to last year? Or, I mean, I remember this presentation, but just wondering how, what's the reflection back for this year's plan? Like, what's the connection?
How does it reflect back to the strategic plan?
Yeah, or last year's?
We were still working from the five-year strategic plan that we developed with Strategy Matters at that point.
Okay.
So.
We can barely hear you.
So, thank you.
So, before this year, we were working with a consulting firm called Strategy Matters to develop a five-year strategic plan for our district. Now that we have finally transitioned into Mountain View, we felt strongly about developing our own plan. So, some of these goals are kind of overlapping a little bit, especially around professional collaboration, family engagement, as well as kind of bringing the teams together. So, they are a continuation of things that we've done before, but some of the things we're implementing new, like the new DESA screener and those types of things.
Excellent. And then, under management slash counseling, B, so River Valley, are they called in, or do they have specific space in the school?
They have a space in the school that they use, and they are referred by individual families. So, they use our space. They're on a daily basis. I think we have four offices that are being used on a daily basis by River Valley Counseling at this point. We're thankful to have them in our schools.
Yeah, no, I was delighted to see it. So, under instructional B, we talk about the, you know, comparing 2024 MCAS scores and data collection, and I know there's been a lot of concern in our community, but also on the state level, about MCAS being the only assessment for our kids. And when I read that, I was wondering, when you talk about the other, like, data collection, does that include other assessments or supervi, you know? Yes.
Yeah, particularly at the elementary level, we use a variety of norm reference assessments several times a year. So, we're using what's called the STAR assessment to assess students and their early literacy skills at the K to five level. We're also using a new program called Forefront to assess students formatively in math. So, we're using that three times a year as well, and all of that data is housed in the program called Forefront. So, students, so teachers can use student information data to plan for instruction, to plan for tiered intervention if students need it, and look at specific skills that students are having deficits in, and work to help them with those skills.
Great. And then, the last, well, I guess I have two more questions, but the last one, of course, my screen just went. Under SEL Coordinator, School Adjustment Counselor, on C, MVS will partner with River Valley slash EPD to make available mental health counseling services. So, a question is, with all respect to everybody, and now I'm gonna go right to the quagmire, East Hampton Public, East Hampton Police Department doesn't have mental health counseling other than a co-responder?
We work with Emma Riley, the co-responder, and she doesn't work with our students, however, she works with our staff.
Okay. So, I have concern with that language. Grave concern, one, it's a grant-funded position, and also, the clarification between her and Ellen, the other clinician via grant that's working with public safety. I just don't see the connection, especially when we have a community social worker that I know at liaisons, and it's not mentioned in this plan. So, I'm, I am concerned. I am sure there is a nuance and a place for EPD in the schools, and I hear from the police department all the time that the exchange of information with the schools, like, what happens on the bus and what happens on the weekend. That's a tough one for me, because I think, I feel it's one step closer to a school resource officer, which I, as mayor, and personally, am very against. There's not a criminality element in East Hampton Public Schools. And if there is a mental health issue that the police respond to, there should be a report and hand it off then to a clinical facility, which I think is River Valley Counseling. I think they're, or CHD is our catchman.
I, so, I get what you're, I get what you're saying. I think that this needs to just be clarified a little bit, because in no way is EPD providing mental health support to our students. It's more as a support to our staff.
Okay, great. If we could, yeah.
And I can fix that.
Thank you. And then, the last is kind of connected to this, but also something we hear a lot, the posting of curriculum on the website. So, it's been a while since I've had a kid. That's an amazing amount of material, like, not that I don't want to post it, but I'm just, it's just a lot of material to put on the website. And also, when you're looking at a curriculum, there's modifications. I want parents to be fully informed, but I'm worried about the administrative burden, and especially when it's addressed in here with communication with parents and whatnot. I, I don't know.
I think, I think what we have found, and we talked about this with our school councils a little bit, what we have found to be most useful for parents is a guide that's put out by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education around what students are expected to know and do by the time they reach the end of the grade level. And that's something that we have shared with families via newsletter, but it's also on our website as well. In terms of our website, our curricular programs are shared, links to the specific things that, the specific curricular programs that we use, and parents can find out more information and what each unit entails. It's a lot, but it only changes over the course of a few years. So, at this point, I think, at least at the elementary and middle school level, it's doable, but I find that what is most useful to parents is that guide that's put out by DESI.
Yeah, and I clicked through the links, and what I found as far as curricula, and also those guidelines, was, that's what prompts the question. And then, when I looked at the plan, it's just a lot of information, but the explanation, curricula not changing every single year, I see where the burden is a little less.
Yeah, yeah. And we plan on, you know, as the months progress, we plan on spotlighting different curricular areas, and especially in our English Language Arts curriculum, just to give parents a little bit more information about what their children are doing during the day.
I think you've filled out my question.
Anyone else on the committee have any questions?
I had a question about the Family and Community Engagement Part C, where we're providing consistent feedback to families. Is there a way we can get, it sounds like the STAR reporting is done three times a year?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any way, is that, is that information then sent home?
It isn't, but it is certainly information that parents are privy to, but there's kind of different schools of thought around that. Those kinds of assessments are used to plan instruction, and they're in no way a report card for parents. So, we just, we want to differentiate that a little bit. We want to make sure that parents are aware, you know, this is where your, this is where your children is, this is where your child is, here are the places that they need intervention, these are the specific skills that we'd like to work on with your child, but it's not a reflection of where they may be at the end of the year. So, it's different from a report card, like a standards-based report card that we use. You're privy to the information as a parent, but it's strictly used for our purposes for how we instruct the child.
Okay, so it's looked at more as the whole class element as, and, okay.
It's a norm reference, it's a national test, it's fast, it's done three times a year, but it gives us some really good information.
Right, no, I use, we use those as well in my district, and it is great to get that check-in, because as the mayor said, the MCAS is one piece, but it also, it happens so late in the year. You know, you get the data back the next, you really don't get it until the next year. It's the same with us for teachers, you know, figuring out how to instruct a group when it's already passed you. So, I was wondering if maybe a way?
Something that we typically do is we share, whether the teachers say it or not, they use the STAR information to have a discussion with you at parent-teacher conferences. So, they can tell you specifically how your children are doing in each of the areas, and they talk to it. And that's usually the information that they're using when they're having the conversation with you.
Cool, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Ben.
This is maybe building on what's been said already, but one of the things I've always been concerned about around MCAS is that it seems like the results come out into the school year, and you were talking about interventions based on the scores. So, I'm assuming that's happening now, like, their scores are out and students are getting specific attention based on their scores? Is that in play right now?
I think that in terms of MCAS, it's, over the years, it's gotten better and better. I mean, we start to get MCAS information at the end of summer, so we can start planning, but that's really just one data point that we use. It's more along the lines of these formative assessments that gives us really detailed information and drills down specifically to the skills that the students need. So, yes, we use MCAS information that we get, kind of looking at it more holistically, like, what is an entire grade level struggling with? So, are there holes in our curriculum that we need to fill in? But in terms of specific student instruction, we're looking more at those formative assessments that are done more frequently.
Like the STAR?
STAR, and also, you know, teacher-created assessments, and the curricular assessments that we just do in the classrooms.
So, it sounds like the MCAS scores are sort of like voluntary, if a teacher wants to apply it to a child's situation or not? Like, it doesn't necessarily sound like that's.
It's just, it's just one data, it's just one data point. And, you know, we, we share that information with our teachers, and we look at it and use it, but it's just, it's just one set of data.
Through the chair, just another point also is that on the MCAS, there's an item analysis of what the whole class did. So, a teacher will get that report back, and you can clearly see if you missed an area of instruction. So, then you would know, okay, I missed this whole area of instruction. This year, when I'm teaching this new class in front of me, I have to make sure I cover that. So, the MCAS does come with a lot of resources, and I particularly love the item analysis, because you can clearly see where your gaps are.
That's probably the most useful report that we got.
I guess, just to, that's great, thank you, I appreciate it. I was thinking about also, this is the next one about management and operations. I was just curious, like, by November 15th, 2023, the MVS Crisis Team will be identified and meet to review. Like, this has already happened, I'm just wondering how it's going, like?
It's going really well. We've refined who is a member of our crisis team, and it's, well, I think, every member of our social-emotional learning team, which has been fabulous. And we also have representatives from the East Hampton Police Department, as well as the East Hampton Fire Department, as members of the team. So, when we're planning for information to be shared around student safety, school safety, if we have questions, for example, I'm trying to think of the, we needed some additional equipment, we had some consultation from the fire department that was really helpful for us in planning and ordering for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, questions?
Yes, I have my questions. So, most of my questions have been answered, I think, the specific ones. I was just wondering if you could give me, remind me, and I apologize if I missed this, sort of the background on like, what is the role of the school council? How many people are on the school council? How do they get on the school council? Like, how did these four particular areas get selected? And then, within the four areas, how do you come up, who comes up with the benchmarks and like the goals in those areas?
Typically, the school plans for that, because they're initiatives that we have to be working on. We have, gee, I think we have, I think we have 13 members of school council. We have representative parents from the elementary school, as well as the middle school, some both. We have teachers from the elementary school and the middle school who are on the council as well. They provide input into the plan, but the school personnel is who actually writes the plan.
Gotcha. So, if I can just clarify to make sure I understand, these are four areas that, because this is what is under your purview of like stuff you have to do, these are the four areas you brought this group together, how do you see, like, what input do you have on this? And then, you guys write?
Yes.
Okay. I think that.
Sam?
Oh, and you had, actually, Megan, you had asked, so, a school council is typically selected by an election. Because we have so few people that volunteer to be on school council, we didn't have to have an election, so anyone who wanted to be on it was able to become a member.
So, again, just to clarify, that is that you put out something and say, are you interested in this? People say, yes, I am.
Correct. We put out a, like, a Google form, would you be interested in doing this? This is what the responsibilities are, here's the commitment for you in terms of meeting, would you like to be a part of it? And people respond, and if we had 100 people respond, we would have to have an election to figure it out, but due to the number of people that respond, we're able to just have everyone who is interested in being a member.
So, this would then be a place that parents, if they wanted to get more involved in their school and in curriculum, might want to look at.
Correct, correct.
And they can attend, right?
And anyone can attend, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyone can attend, yeah.
Cool.
And we've been, we had been doing them remotely at this point, we're doing it hybrid, and I think last time, we only had two people that joined remotely, most people just prefer, we're all sitting in the same room.
Nice.
I have one quick question for you, Jill. How many school adjustment counselors do you have right now at Mountain View?
We have two at the elementary level, one for pre-K to two, one for three to five, and we have two counselors, Heidi Bai and Jan Norman, at the middle school level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other questions? Have a seat, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, members, there was a request to vote on this tonight. We don't have such a motion on the floor, if somebody would like to move to approve the school improvement plan.
Yes. I'm wondering if I can get a little more detail on like, so, we are voting, in theory, to approve this plan? Okay. I have, I have one more tiny, and I don't know if this is for Jill or perhaps for Superintendent Bennett. So, it's January now, is this typically the time of the year where we approve the school improvement plans?
So, it depends upon, you know, when you get all your information and when you get your school council set and ready to go. So, custom- So customarily, this time, early January is when we approve them. And it goes until June and then you will look at it again and get your new data and then it starts again.
Was this a two-year one, did I hear that somewhere?
This is, it is actually a one-year plan.
This is a one-year one?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason I wrote them-
No, I think you may have been, our, our strategic plan was a multi-year plan.
Got it, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the Mountain View school-
Can I just ask, um, just thinking about what the mayor said, revising that language, can we get some revision on that before we?
What is the revision request, removing EPD?
Just specify.
I'm, I'm, just clarifying the roles. One, um, River Valley Council, I can never say, uh, River Valley is for students and families and EPD through a grant is specifically for employees. And, and just to kind of edge, you know, sketch that out, um, so I, yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. So then we're gonna table this for tonight if there's no further questions. Thank you very much, Jill. We are gonna move on to the East Hampton High School school improvement plan.
Yep, and so this is, um, there are four areas are intentional instructional practices. And, uh, so they want to establish, implement high-quality instructional practices in all classrooms and to have a well-defined system for monitoring enhancing classroom instruction so that the monitoring instruction relates to goals, it's clearly explained to teachers, feedback is directly linked to instructional expectations, including support to teachers. So the overarching goal is, is the percentage of EHS students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations on the math MCAS will increase from 44%, which was a 23, to 50 for 24. And the key actions, well, administrators will support math instruction by providing supervision and feedback. Instructional coach will provide support to math teachers as needed on instructional techniques. Counselors, team leaders and administrators will direct additional resources to math classes to reduce student adult ratios as much as possible. And professional development on trauma-informed instruction and working memory. So, um, the evidence will be the 24 MCAS scores. And, uh, part is responsible are administrators, school counselors, math teachers, instructional coach, special ed teachers and paraeducators. So the second core practice is, uh, specific student support practices. Uh, it says that East Hampton High School provide student-specific support and interventions informed by the data and identification of student-specific results. The strategic objective is to establish a system of tiered interventions for students that ensures that students receive support with regular attendance. Uh, you've probably been reading and hearing a lot about the federal government and also the state about chronic absenteeism, it has now become a goal. Um, that, I don't know what happened today, but I, um, know that the meeting with the Board of Ed was today and there was a very, uh, big discussion, um, I didn't hear the end of it, but I'm sure we'll hear, um, from the commissioner tomorrow on that, um, regarding chronic absenteeism. From the point that, uh, they wanted to take some of the points that go for academic achievement on the MCAS and move it to chronic absenteeism for how they're gonna judge school districts. Also, on, um, today I attended a webinar, a two-hour webinar on chronic absenteeism through the country and, you know, what are some of the techniques we can use? And basically, uh, it talks a lot about, um, the issue is that because we told families, if your child's sick, keep them home during the COVID time now, it's very difficult for parents to make that decision. What does that mean now to send them to school and not send them to school? And, and also, the, uh, challenges that families feel it's more important for them to take family vacations during school times now because family has taken on a much stronger meaning for families. So some of that is all adding to chronic absenteeism. And so that's a, that's a huge conversation that's happening now in the nation in Massachusetts. So this one, um, EHS will decrease chronic absenteeism from 26.8, uh, to 15% this year is a very big important goal and, uh, something that we need to pay a lot of attention to. So they will support student attendance to increase communication on attendance concerns, positive reinforcement for consistent attendance and partnering with families and caregivers. On the webinar that I went to today, there was a lot of information on letting families and caregivers know early, when the child's only out on the second day, making phone calls to say, is everything all right? Because we don't want them to get to that fifth day and that ninth day. So here we have the key actions here, five-day, nine-day absent letters mailed home, we miss you postcards, uh, praise and welcoming messages for attendance, parent gear, uh, caregiver conferences and increased access to counseling services through the school adjustment counselor and from the same group that, um, Jill talked about. Benchmarks, by the end of fall semester, chronic absenteeism reduced to 20%. Again, administrators, school counselors and teachers are responsible. Okay, leadership practice number three. East Hampton High School established a community of practice through leadership, shared responsibility and professional collaboration. The strategic objective, to establish high-functioning grade level and leadership teams that use research-based protocols and teaming practices that will improve collaboration and professional learning among leadership teachers and enable teachers to improve classroom instruction. So EHS will establish and implement a two-year professional inquiry plan that allows teachers to work in small groups, research, pilot and report on specific techniques or interventions that support student learning. Provide teachers professional development on trauma-informed instruction, working memory, allow teachers to develop areas of interest and develop collaborative teams and implement inquiry cycle of research, implementation, data collection and sharing information. So the benchmark, by the end of this year, professional development inquiry groups will be established, a strategic plan for research, implementation, reporting will be in place for 24, 25. And then they'll, uh, report the findings in May of 25. So it, the plan, it is listed for now because the beginning part start now and then it's continued to be monitored after that. And the core practice number four, family engagement and positive climate and culture. East Hampton High School established a climate and culture that provides a safe, orderly and respectful environment for students and a collegial, collaborative and professional culture among teachers that supports the district's focus on increasing student achievement. The strategic objective, to strengthen school culture climate by intentionally implementing culturally-responsive instructional materials and practices, multi-tiered system of support, family engagement and opportunities for staff professional collaboration. The overarching goal is, East Hampton High School will build experiences that demonstrate diverse, student-centered instructional practices. EHS will ensure curriculum materials reflect the various backgrounds and perspectives of all students. EHS will provide professional development on culturally-responsive instruction. And EHS will reestablish a diversity inclusion center that supports my, marginalized student population. They will acknowledge and celebrate the traditions and observances of all student backgrounds. The benchmarks are curriculum inventory in English classes completed by the end of this year. By January, a new diversity inclusion liaison will be hired, that did occur. And number three, professional development plan for 24, 25, established by September of 24, to include culturally-responsive instructional practices. So the evidence is gonna be revision in the English curriculum by fall 2025, professional development on culturally-responsive instructional practices, which is currently going on, uh, but the plan would be, um, completed by June 25. And these are four areas that you see here, are four areas that are, um, school improvement plans that, um, go across the state on this. These are four core practices that you see in effective instruction in effective districts throughout the state. And DSC also looks at them as very important, um, core improvement to make difference, uh, for students.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mayor?
Um, so, uh, the chronic absenteeism, I've been following that a little bit in, um, from, uh, DSC and, and the Department of Ed. And the, my question is, there used to be a rule or, or something where if a student, high school student or maybe all, any student hits 15 days of absenteeism, we have to file a 51A? And I'm just wondering if that's still the law and I'm not gonna break the law. It just seems like that's a, a really rough intervention for family and, and students and I, I-
So, um, although that's not specific to the plan, I'm happy to address the, uh, the question. I am not familiar with the 15-day limit on filing a 51A. When a student is chronically absent, we have a couple of interventions. Obviously, we go through some of the, the steps that are outlined in the plan. Uh, there might be, uh, a filing of a child requiring assistance or CRW with the court. Um, if the student is, um, if it's clear that the parent is making efforts and the student is, continues to resist, then we'll ask the court to intervene. If it's clear that the parent does not seem to want to intervene, then we can make the, uh, the decision to file a 51A. But we wouldn't do it based on a number, we would do it based on a series of interventions that have not worked. Does that make sense?
Yep, no, it does, cuz I just, with following this, I know other districts, um, have sort of different plans and I, I didn't know exactly what our plan was and then I saw this. And so the other question I have around this is the, the letters, the five and the nine. Um, so the nine, or in the nine letter, does it talk about you, because of attendance, you might not get credit for a class?
Yes.
Um, and do we do that in the five-day letter too, saying if this continues?
Yeah, so the, um, the state says a, a, a benchmark of 10%.
Yep.
Um, and nine, because we're, uh, long block schedule, each of our courses goes 90 days. So that's where the nine comes from. Um, so the policy is, it's in the handbook, it's reviewed with, um, students at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And on the five-day letter, it will say, if you get to nine, you risk losing credit.
Mm-hmm, okay.
To clarify on that point, so is, chronic absenteeism is 10, given the schedule?
I believe the benchmark for, for chronic absenteeism is above 10% on the state level, yeah. I'm not as familiar with their criteria.
Yeah, so it's 10% of 180 for regular, it's 100.
So it depends on the schedule, thank you.
Yeah, so for a full year, they might measure it at 18 for-
Got it.
Right, for a, a student's full year. Um, we do it by nine because we have to judge credit by semester long.
Right, thank you.
Linda, did you have your hand up earlier?
I have thoughts, but I don't have my hand up.
Okay, Sam?
Um, I, so I actually, I have a similar question about the definition of chronic absenteeism, which was, so that was very helpful. I, um, was also wondering, just about, we were talking about, um, kind of issues with the fact that students stayed home during COVID. We really, um, encourage them to stay home when they're sick. We would still like for them to not come to school actively ill. Um, and certainly, um, you know, other families have concerns about their children becoming sick and don't wanna send them to school, um, necessarily in, as much. And so I'm just wondering, like, is, are these like eight, I mean, if somebody is sick, are they able to get an excused absence? Um, do they have to get a doctor's note in order to do that? Or is there like a, how does that work necessarily?
So excused absences, um, fall under, uh, certain categories. One of the, one of, one that is not an excused absence is a parent calling and saying, my, my child will be absent today. Um, that's not an excused absence because, um, parents will call-
Yeah.
Multiple times, many times, well over our limit and say, ah, my kid's not coming to school today. For whatever reason, lots of dynamics going on at home. So things that do get excused. If our nurse says to a student, you are too sick to be in school and you need to go home, then they're excused for the rest of that day because we're making that decision. We also do not allow students to come in for five days if they've, um, tested positive for COVID. So if we have evidence of that positive test, then we will excuse those five days because again, those are us saying to the student, you cannot come into school. Um, lastly, um, yes, a doctor's note. If a doctor, if we get a doctor's note saying the student was not able to come to school because of this, then that becomes an excused absence.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I do have a question around-
Go ahead, Linda.
So, um, because during COVID and, you know, we had, of course, learning, remote learning, and then I know there was a period where, or because I know someone who, um, was my granddaughter at home with it and not showing any signs, so she was able to attend class remotely. Do we still have that option?
So no, the, the Department of Ed has said that no, no districts can provide any remote learning of any kind. So we don't, but the, that's why we also say, if you can show evidence of having tested positive, that you can be excused for those days.
Okay, okay.
But we can't do remote-
So they don't have that option anymore, okay.
I have, oh, go ahead.
Just, this is just curiosity, I, I know this is a national problem, absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, but I'm just curious, like, um, is there any kind of engagement with the students at our school um, around kind of what's going on? Like, I don't know if it's a survey or a, you know, like, is there a way to like, talk to the students and kind of ask them what they need or, uh, this is an open-ended question, like, certainly, like, um, but I'm just thinking, like, sometimes, you know, we, we have these great interventions, a five-day letter, we miss you postcards, et cetera, like, but how do we talk to them?
So it really is individual.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, if we, if, if 15% of our students, by the way, we're, we're gonna meet our benchmark for the, for the semester. Um, if 15% of our students are chronically absent over the first semester, that means that 85% of our students are not, right? And so if we put out a survey, what we're really trying to do is target the 15%. And we're already targeting them because we're having individual conversations with them and their families. And really, like, um, some of it is, uh, the, the spectrum of reasons that students don't come to school regularly is pretty broad.
Sure.
And I do think that there is, um, uh, the added factor, if we look at last year's 23%, I'm very, very convinced that that is a result of lack of student, um, school stamina that is a hangover, if you will, from COVID.
Okay, yeah.
That I think is getting better.
I mean, I've seen that at HCC, like, just getting your wheels back, getting your-
I, I think that's part of the national conversation, I'm sure.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, through the chair, um, also, uh, if you look at the, the attendance, uh, you can also see that sometimes it's a few students that have high absenteeism and those numbers affect everybody. So, um, that's why it's good to look at, um, individual students and, you know, really work with the parents, uh, try to provide support in school for them. At the high school, you know, um, they had that day of finals, uh, the end of the semester, they were able to stay and make up time so that, um, those absences then could be excused. So that, they were able to, they make plans for them to stay after school in the main office, somebody stays with them, so, um, they also have provided lots of opportunities for kids to make that up, which will make a difference too in the final numbers for chronic absenteeism.
In our, in our handbook, students can make up five days beyond the nine. So once you get to 14, then you've exceeded that. But if you're 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, then you can still make up some of that time and we'll take some of those absences off so that, for credit purposes.
So I guess I, I do have one other question about, um, so students who do take vacation time during, and how do we handle that if they do?
Those are not excused.
Okay.
So when we know that a student is going on vacation, we sit down with them and/or their parent or caregiver, say, okay, what are your absences to this point? If you take five days off in the middle of March, what's it gonna do to your absences? And is that gonna put you in danger of losing credit? How are you, how are you gonna keep up with your studies? Obviously, we allow students to get emails and correspond with their teachers and try to keep up with work. Um, that's usually a condition, that's not a condition that I can set, but it's a recommendation that we make and- And teachers are usually really good about helping kids get through that. But the days are not excused.
Okay, so it's possible for a child to be able to keep up with their schoolwork with certain conditions that's with their teachers, but they would still have those days as absentee?
So, they would be counted as unexcused absences.
Yeah.
Right? And we'll do everything that we can, short of remote learning, right? To make sure they stay up to date. They usually get a stuff, stuff to do while they're gone. And then they stay after they get back to get caught up. But there's no like, oh, you can have these five days.
Okay.
As your family planned for it.
I just wanted to clarify the issue.
There are vacations built in.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Megan.
Just to clarify, this is the same general idea of school council, right? So, there's like the leadership team bringing these things forward, and then a group of parents and teachers providing input.
Yeah, and same sort of results. We put it out to the full community. And then after the crickets are done chirping, you start tapping people on the shoulder. We have two parents, one staff member, and one student on our student council. And that's the difference in high school, we can have students.
Okay, so two, so six?
Including myself, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Five.
I also was just curious. I saw a few places in here that there's an emphasis, and I think that you've spoken to us about this before, about culturally responsive learning and trauma-informed learning. And I think that's great. Is there a particular, like, impetus for where this kind of focus is coming from? Is there a particular, like, company we're contracting with to get trauma-informed learning practices for PD days? I'm just curious to hear more about it.
Sure, so, thank you, right? So, the impetus is the explosion of mental health issues amongst adolescents in the last 13 years. Anxiety, depression, and, and that was even before the pandemic, right? And seeing that play out in our classrooms with students that really have a hard time being in classrooms, following through on work, being able to focus, all of that. We had two professional development guests come in and work with us at the beginning of this year. I'm going to forget who the trauma-informed person was, who talked to us about how the brain responds to trauma, how students typically respond, what you see, what you don't see. It was fascinating. It was really helpful, really informative. And on the heels of that, we had a gentleman come in for two different sessions to do work on working memory in the brain, which really dovetailed into that really, really well. So, you know, when you've taught something and the student has no idea what they, what you taught, we have some understanding of why that happens. And if they've experienced trauma, that really informs some of that as well. So, we've had those trainings. And now, we can start our inquiry groups with that information in mind and start doing some more of a deeper dive and trying some practices in the classrooms.
I think that's awesome. I think it's, I see a lot of it in students at the college level. You know, it doesn't have to be the capital T traumas to make a big impact on their learning. So, I think that's, that's great. And sometimes when we're doing this PD at the college level, I think, I wonder if there's any room to do like, trauma-informed teaching practices for like, how do you teachers take care of themselves when they've been through trauma too? But that's just a side note. I think that's awesome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Principal Evans.
Thank you for your time.
We, it's our understanding that we need the East Hampton High School School Council to vote on this proposed plan. So, we're going to table this school improvement plan as well.
Yeah, they were interrupted by the weather.
Not a problem. Thank you so much.
That's like...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to our finance update.
Good evening, everyone. Those school improvement plans are a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. So, this report here is a little bit dated. It was intended for the meeting that was canceled two weeks ago. But the information is still certainly relevant. At the time of publication of this report, 53.42% of our local appropriation had either been spent or was encumbered. It's important to note that some expenses currently in the general fund will be reclassified to other funding sources as the year progresses. I'm continuing to monitor the FY '24 budget for areas to watch and, you know, transfers that may be needed, which I will bring to you if they total above $5,000. I'm also monitoring spending from grants and revolving funds to ensure that any shortfall we may face at the end of the year can be covered. The plan is toward the end of the year, well, I'll do a couple of forecasts. I usually do one in early March, and then a second one in, you know, probably late April, just to hone in on, you know, where the end of the year picture is going to look. And then from there, I will start reclassifying some of those expenses. So, you know, I just put everything in the general fund upfront this year to see where we all end up. And then we'll, we'll move the expenses as needed toward the end of the year. The FY '25 budget process update, the process is certainly in full swing at this time. Principals and directors have gotten me all the info that I need to put together the first draft of the operating budget, of which the leadership team met with me yesterday to look over. I'm, of course, looking at, you know, budgeted and actual spending totals from past years to factor this, you know, factor that information into the budget development process. The budget timeline is pretty much solidified now, you know, thanks to our finance subcommittee meeting that we had before this meeting. So, we have dates for that. And we'll meet three or four times. And then finally, this will culminate with the public hearing in late March. The Governor's House One budget is due out tomorrow. So, at that point, we'll have a preliminary view of what our Chapter 70 aid may be. I call this Business Manager Thanksgiving. I love when that thing comes out because you get your, you know, your assessments for the city as well as receipts. Of course, it's preliminary at this phase, you know, once it goes through the House and the Senate, it may change. It did not last year. If anything, a couple of things went up. But, you know, it at least gives us a basis, you know, which is certainly instrumental as the city develops their budget. So, I'll be looking forward to that DLS email tomorrow. Hopefully, it comes early. Item number three, the mid-year CEP implementation. We were approved, you recall at the December meeting, I told you I had to get that application in. We were approved during the holiday break week. So, what this will ultimately do is change our reimbursement claim percentages as well as move the reimbursement source to entirely federal. So, basically, what they do is they take your percentage of students that would qualify for free lunch, and they multiply it by, I think, 1.6 is the factor. And they base the reimbursements on that. I don't think it's going to really do much in terms of changing the amount of reimbursements we get. If anything, they'll go up slightly. But the source changes, which was very important to the state, just because they want to maximize federal dollars as they continue to fund the universal free meals for students across the state. There's districts that would never qualify for that, so they kind of want to focus the state dollars on those districts and the federal dollars on ones that would qualify. So, in any event, this will be in effect through FY '27. So, I don't, I do have to like, submit an annual application every June, but I don't have to go through the whole process again for four years. We will no longer have to collect free and reduced meal paperwork, you know, the forms that went home at the beginning of the year. We won't have to do that anymore, you know, which, which is good. I think sometimes those forms can be confusing to families and, and everything. It's certainly, it's a paper, I mean, it's the amount of paper you go through. And a lot of times, families, you know, they don't qualify, they're just going to recycle them. So, however, we will need to identify families that would, you know, qualify for other in-district benefits, such as, you know, not having to pay for a bus pass or an athletic fee or, you know, something like that. So, we will have to develop an alternative source to find these families, you know, probably through the means of a much less complicated form. You know, so we will still find those people. I can talk to what some, you know, other districts, what they do. I mean, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. There's other people doing this now. So, you know, we'll deal with that in the summer when, you know, we start planning for, for next year. But in any event, the CEP has been approved. Before I move on to the personnel report, does anybody have any questions about the financial report?
I'm going to reach out to Community Action though and see if they have a form because I'd like to pin that down by April or May. Some things we'll have time to vet it before the summer, but we'll, we'll work on that. We'll get it on the agenda after the budget season.
Yeah, I mean, the forms, I think what a lot of districts probably use is what's called a supplemental low-income form, which the state came up with a couple of years ago to identify people that just didn't get, you know, identified through the state virtual gateway. You can, you know, if you do have families that would qualify that way, they do have to provide some evidence, you know, just to verify it. And the state actually audits that. You can count those, those people in your low-income percentage when you do your SIMS reporting. You know, so that would, you know, that group, however large it may be, would factor into your Chapter 70 aid, you know, if we do identify anybody that way. So, in any event, we will certainly, you know, find the families that we need to in order to not put undue financial burden on them for, you know, for things such as buses and sports and things like that. All right, if there's no further questions, I'll move on to the personnel report for last month. We had eight new hires, a couple substitute teachers, a night custodian, a certified occupational therapy assistant, diversity inclusion liaison, and two paraeducators and a computer technician. So, a lot of the vacancies that you saw in prior personnel reports are, you know, have now been filled. We did have five separations last month. We had two custodians retire. And we had two paraeducators leave, as well as an admin assistant at Mountain View leave. We had one transfer, a night custodian transferred into the day job, you know, replacing the, one of the individuals that retired. The current vacancies list you see here, the Mountain View Middle School librarian is still vacant. The long-term speech-language pathologist sub is still vacant. At this time, we're, we're actually contracting with a, an outside vendor to provide some of those services, just to make sure that, you know, needs are met.
Interviews or anything in process, or no leads on that yet?
It's been posted several times. It's just, that's a hard one to fill, especially because SLPs are in very, very high demand. I know, because my wife is one and, you know, they, yeah, she could work anywhere right now. There's, there's an extreme shortage, so...
A lot of money.
Yeah.
If I had known when I went into college, it's a... The substitute position, is that for the remainder of this year?
Yep. Yep, we had somebody take a year leave. We anticipate that person will be back next year. So, EHS paraeducator is still vacant. Two paraeducators in Mountain View have been filled as of this week. And special ed teacher in Mountain View is still vacant. So, I will have another report for you at the February meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, we are on to school committee discussion. First, we're going to look for a policy subcommittee update.
We finally have a meeting scheduled.
Excellent.
For this upcoming Friday at 9:00 AM, assuming that there are no horrible weather events or...
Sam, is that your first meeting or your second meeting?
That's my first, that's our first meeting.
First meeting, so you don't have a chair yet.
We don't have a chair yet. And the first one was canceled because of the weather. And then this is a busy time of year for me.
Say for me one more time, this scheduled meeting is Monday?
Monday, or no, Friday, this upcoming Friday at 9:00 AM.
Friday at 9:00 AM.
And it is, it is back here, so.
That'll be in-person only, if anybody is interested, okay. Finance subcommittee update, Megan.
Yes, so we just met in our meeting. I was elected chair of the finance subcommittee, so I will be providing your update here tonight.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you very much. Nick explained all of the wonderful stuff that he has been working on and provided us an overview of the process from here on out for the budget, including several meetings. I think we have three meetings and then a holding spot for a fourth meeting, just in case. And then down the road, we have our public meeting here at the full school committee. And then it will go to city council. And so, there's a full sort of budget process. And those minutes will come out with all of the dates listed. And of course, agendas will get posted. So, anyone is welcome to join any of those upcoming meetings. And that is our primary upcoming task.
Great, thank you so much. We are going to take the next two items, and we're going to move item H in this thing. We're going to vote on three supplemental members. So, the first is an election of a CES board member, which is someone from this school committee who'd be a member of the collaborative, attend those meetings, which are what, roughly every four to six weeks? Bounce back between North Hampton and Greenfield. They have a ton of great information to share, so it's a great place to absorb and socialize. And is there anybody who might be interested in nominating themselves or somebody who's interested in nominating somebody else?
I think it is, just to clarify, once a month, and it does alternate Greenfield here. So, it's only during the school year. So, it is like four meetings in Greenfield or something along those lines. I think Ben has attended some of them. Do you have anything else to say about...
I only attended virtually. And it was all, it's all, it's all business for that, for the collaborative. Like, you're basically reading through their bylaws. You're helping them kind of, you're on the Board of Governor essentially, and you're just helping them make their decisions. Remote wasn't very good. I'm sure in-person, I've heard it's really good. I've never experienced that yet. So, I think there's something to it that's, that's really fantastic. But I think someone should do it.
Yes. Carefully wording was my next question.
Someone should do it and truly enjoy it because I think there's something there. But I, my life has changed. It's, that's a hard one for me.
Anyone else?
I can dive in there. I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. I can nominate, I can make a motion to nominate myself.
Someone's going to nominate themselves. Can I get a second?
I will have a second.
Second?
Ben got it. Ben got it in first, so.
Oh, Ben, Ben second.
Congrats.
Sue decides who second's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Congratulations, Sam.
Thank you.
Next, we need to, we need two of us to attend the last of the school building committee members. That is relevant to the Mountain View School project. They're just ironing out some final details with construction, making sure all systems are fully operational before we close out that contract. So, that committee has to continue to meet until that's done. I am happy to take one. Is there anyone here who would nominate themselves for the second position?
I will.
Eric? That's nomination. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Sam seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. I'm going to nominate myself. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those opposed? I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. I've not had dinner tonight. Brace yourself. All right, and the last would be the Mountain View School Equity Committee member.
Do you have any background on this committee? I think Maureen might know a bit about it, a bit more than I do.
Yeah, it's, it's really a committee that's, it also has students on it and parents. And they look at equity issues in the district.
Throw me in then.
And I think you were part of that committee before.
I was on the Equity Committee for the district. That was part of the previous Attorney General's kind of requirement. And it seemed like that kind of went, got quiet, but this seems a good new...
I'd love to nominate Ben for that committee.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, Megan nominates. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sam seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Beautiful. All right, so we're going to jog back up to the St. Patrick's Day Parade discussion, which we touched on briefly at our organizational meeting. What is the deaths, the deadlines, Sue, that we have to respond? Oh, great, excellent, because this was, we were supposed to do this at our last meeting. Yeah.
We have a few of us who are going to go.
A few are going to go. Do we need to do anything else on this? Yes, ma'am.
So, we actually changed the procedures this year for the parade and are gathering all the departments and replying once. So, in that reply, we said, you know, expect some school committee or school. You know, and they, they were fine with that. It's not a big deal as long as, you know, it's not a ban or a float. So, it's all, once we get the information, we'll get it to everybody. We can't make a school...
So, is it safe to say if there's anyone who's interested who didn't tell you at the organizational meeting, they should reach out and let you know?
Just let Lindsay actually know.
If you want to go, just shout out to Lindsay Mailer, the mayor's assistant.
Will do.
Okay. You were the only one we couldn't get...
But I can't bring my guitar because no band. That's fair. That's fair. That's fair. That's not about me.
All right, moving on from St. Patrick's Day, a discussion of the in-person hybrid meetings. Okay, I'm going to kick this off.
Yeah.
We very much want as much participation from the community as possible. That said, whoever has been watching the meeting in the entirety of the night sees that we are still ironing out some really frustrating technical issues that are making it difficult for us to do the work in the best way possible. I am going to have a couple more meetings with some of our tech folks and some support folks to see if I can get this working in a way that is efficient and effective. My personal opinion is, if we can't get this up and running by the middle of February in a streamlined way, we might have to revisit whether or not we can include this technology, because at this point, it's becoming troublesome in our ability to conduct a reasonable meeting. Does anybody else have thoughts on that? Yeah, Megan, go ahead.
I have two thoughts. One is that I just want to bring back up as an elected official that one of the things that our community has said is that they really would like hybrid meetings. I know the city has strongly supported hybrid meetings as well. And the second sort of comment around this is, I would love for us to, and maybe this is the chair and the secretary can coordinate with the city, maybe for a short period of time, we could have someone come and help us at this time of night. I'm looking to the mayor because she.
So the IT department for the school committee is different than the city, and I think that's part of, all of our meetings now are recorded on the city side, but we purposely pulled a lot of illegal best practices. We pulled IT apart. I did write a memo, and maybe this is, I guess the question is, I know that a lot of documents from the school committee or from the, from the department in general coming in Microsoft, and I'm thinking Teams. I think an alternative to that is if there was a general, or it could be specific to the chair, dual emails. So I have a dual email, I thought about, I remembered that after, that in my, my school email dumps into my city Google account. So I don't know why I'd like else got at easthamptonma.gov. You can access Google Workplace, you know, not necessarily, it doesn't hurt to affect your email. I'm pretty sure that's doable, and encrypting and all of those things. That was my quick Band-Aid. And also, like, special education, do they, do they do remote meetings, and what do they use?
Zoom.
Like, so it could be a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, if you go back to Zoom, that would be, I feel like that would be.
Yeah, I mean, I, we went to Google because of expense and the number of meetings we have, but, you know, I mean, Zoom, it's reliable, we've used it. I know the former chair was really comfortable with it. So, I mean, it's, it's the school, you know, yeah, it's the body's decision of what they want to use, but, yeah.
I do want to, I do also want to clarify, just for people who are listening, that if we were to not do a hybrid meeting over Zoom or Google Meet or some other product, we're still doing the streaming through East Hampton Media. And so the, what would be different for the public would be, that public comment period would have to be in person, or you'd have to submit it in writing to us ahead of time, which was how it was before the pandemic. I think the thing that would make it different for our committee to not be hybrid is that right now, we are able, we have to have, there's, we have to have a quorum of people in person, is my understanding.
Quorum of the chair.
The chair has to be here.
Exactly right.
But we could have participation from other members on, in that hybrid format, who might be home because they're sick or because, for some other reason. So I do think that, like, in regards to the challenges of having kind of robust public engagement, I think that the concern, from my perspective, is more like people who are doing presentations, or speaking with us, or members of the committee themselves. I, as far as the public, you know, you'll still be able to watch the meeting on the East Hampton Media website, which, when I watch my city meetings, I always watch it on the website, because my son likes to unmute me and read people's names. So, you know, that is what I would recommend also. I don't know how many people are aware of that option, but it's also much easier to get into and a lot less buggy, so. So there's that. I mean, what I would really like is, I would, I would love to just have written instructions that we could have and distribute to all of us, so that everybody who is here is able to set up that screen and to do the, if we're doing the Google Meet, to run that essentially, because you do have to let people in and pay attention to what's happening in there.
Yeah, I want to, I'll make one more point of clarification, and then absolutely, Megan. I want to make the public understand, we behind the scenes have been trying to get this under control since September, October of last year. It's just still, you know, if we iron out this and some, so we're working on it. I just wanted to update the public, because it's, we, like, especially with these presentations, it's disruptive, it's frustrating, it's confusing, it's, you know, for 20 minutes in a meeting to have dinner. Go ahead, Megan.
The last point is that there's the hybrid meeting part of it, and then there's the tech in the room part of it. And that part, we should be able to get, like, when there's somebody presenting, we should, I keep looking over at the mayor, like, you have all the answers to tech in the room. When someone is up there presenting and they plug their laptop in, that is separate from a Google Meet issue.
Yeah.
That is not really, when that didn't work, then we had to go to Google Meet sharing, and as Laura said, we've been working on that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not any one particular department or person's issue. It's firewalls, IT attacks, it's like a brave new world of technology that changes between every meeting. So at minimum, we can keep the, you know, a hybrid meeting going, and if we can get the written instructions for how to get this set up, not as part of the Google Meet or Zoom, but just this from the podium, and then every presenter just needs to remember to bring.
Well, and then you also can't present from, from Google Meet, though. So our presenters have to be in person at that point. So it becomes less of a hybrid meeting at that point as well, so.
Anybody else have thoughts? Go ahead, Ben.
I just think, there's no reason to go back to, you know, all in person all the time around this. I think, like, this is like a universal design question to me, like, we need to make it open for people to, like, we had a comment tonight, I think, we just need to find a way to make that happen. Somebody here must know how to do it. I think we can figure it out.
It's got to be possible.
I want the public to know we're trying, that we're aware that it is not perfect right now, and it may take us a little time to get it to where I would feel satisfied. Go ahead.
So one, the governor has already proposed legislation that the hybrid requirements through COVID be permanent, and there seems to be support in the legislature. I just wanted, like, I don't think we'll see it this school year, quite honestly. I will say that, first, the tech in the room is e-media. It's not the city.
Right.
And, and also, everybody else in the city, honestly, can run a Google Meet and do all of the things that I, I don't know, like, all of them do, like, universally.
Agreed, and it's really frustrating.
Yes, yes.
So there are videos, no one, there are videos, there are books, I don't know where they are, that show people how to access these. And I will say again, in the city side, we give them a YouTube link.
Right.
And, and it's, that's the training. But this technology, I think there's maybe, I'm guessing on the email issue, but if the school committee wants to, in their budget, pay for Zoom, have that.
Well, I think the school department is already paying for Zoom, right? So wouldn't we just be able to use the?
I don't know how many seats. We took on the cost of Zoom during COVID.
Okay.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, so this is all stuff we need to do research around.
Go ahead, Linda.
This is something I have a lot of interest in, I have a pretty strong background in this.
Can we talk after the meeting?
Okay.
That would be great. We're gonna, I'm tired of talking about this. Anybody else? We are, we are working on it. Stay tuned. We are going to move on to the Robert's Rules of Order simplified. So I found a two-page simplified Robert's Rules of Order. For those who aren't familiar, is a very long book that is not numbered. So it is the standard for running multi-member boards and meetings, and the mayor, at our reorganizational meeting early in January, recommended that we officially vote to adopt the Robert's Rules of Order for our operations. So that is what it is doing on the agenda. We can, if there are questions, we can take questions, or I would entertain a motion. Mayor.
I, that's one of the best summaries I've ever seen of Robert's Rules of Order.
I scoured.
It's really good. I mean, yeah, it's fabulous.
Any questions, or anybody looking to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the Robert's Rules of Order.
Second?
Second.
Ben? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. All right, that is it for school committee discussion. We're going to move to action items. Megan?
I move to approve the school payroll dated 12/28/2023 in the amount of $594,592.2.
Second?
Oh, that was me, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/28/2023 in the amount of $408,530.86.
Second?
Second.
Eric?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, I make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for EHS to High Meadows, Connecticut in June of 2024, and we had a little, a little bit of background about this in our packet. Is there anything else, Dr. Lindner, that you wanted to say about?
No.
It's their annual senior trip, I think. They go there every year. Yes. Second?
Second.
Sam? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, motion to approve the minutes of the January 2nd, 2024 reorganizational meeting.
Second?
Second.
Sam? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 1/11/2024 in the amount of $586,682.48.
Second? Sam? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 1/11/2024 in the amount of $148,542.94.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the supplemental school payroll dated 1/12/2024 in the amount of $550.10.
Second?
Second.
Sam? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 29th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 12th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Our next meeting dates for the regular school committee, February 13th, March 12, March 26, which at this point in time, if the weather allows and the work is complete, that is when we expect to hold our public hearing on the fiscal year 25 budget. That again is March 26, 2024. After that, we'll be meeting again April 9, April 23, May 14, May 28, and June 11. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just remembering the presence of other on the agenda, is that a, are we, did we move on from that?
You can, this is the, this is the black hole, none of this other.